Yeah, I'll add it.
Oh, look at this.
I'll add it.
Okay.
The Board, um, Library Board that was left off originally. It is now. It is now.
Okay, let's adjourn.
Motion and second.
Do we have a motion to adjourn the previous meeting?
Some of them.
Second.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned at 6:57 PM.
That was to adjourn the meeting we had at 5:15 to 6:45, so. I would be so lucky. Good evening. The December 12th, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempt Village Board of Education called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Please place your mobile phones on silence mode for the meeting. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Bryner.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Present.
Ms. Payne.
Here.
Mr. Tuttle.
Here. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to welcome everyone to the December 12th, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempt Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the District's Paperless Board of Education Agenda System, Board DOCS. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing this Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it be an item on the agenda or another issue. To participate in the hearing of the public session, interested speakers must sign up prior to the start of the meeting. Signups are available online through the school district's website or onsite prior to 7 o'clock. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be called to the microphone. When addressing the board, please state your name and address questions to the board president. Each person may speak only once per segment, and comments are limited to three minutes. The purpose of the hearing of the public is for our community members to address the board. The board continues to welcome feedback from the community as an important component to conducting business. This is an information gathering opportunity for the board and administration so we can work to best serve our community. If at the end of the public participation we do not make a statement, please know this is no demonstration of a lack of care for comments shared by our community. Rather, we want to be thoughtful in our approach, and when, we will provide a response in a timely manner. This meeting is being televised live and on a delayed basis, and will be shown on Spectrum Cable Channel 1026 in Mentor and Channel 1025 in Mentor on the Lake. This meeting is also being recorded and can be found on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV Mentor Ohio. Thank you. At this time, we have district highlights and recognition. Mr. Heath.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Casella to the podium to recognize the Mentor High School Boys Cross Country State Qualifiers.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Mr. Heath, Mr. Wade. It's my pleasure to be here to recognize members of our Boys Cross Country team, who this past November qualified and competed in the OHSA State Cross Country Meet in Columbus. Both of these young men led their team to a successful season with many team accomplishments in addition to their individual accolades. So I ask Coach Dennison to join me up here. First, we have sophomore Matthew Pankowski. In his first year running cross country, he was All-Conference, All-District, and All-Regional recipient on his way to being a state qualifier. His PR this year was a 1605 in the 5K, which was 13th in Mentor High School history. He was also named Academic All-Ohio and News Herald First Team. Matthew Pankowski. Next is Billy Dennison. This is Billy's third time qualifying for the state meet. He's had five top-five finishes this season and was Greater Cleveland Conference runner-up this year as an individual. He is a three-time All-Conference selection, two-time district champion, and two-time regional performer. He broke the school record in the 5K this year with a 1518. He's a two-time Academic All-Ohioan and three-time First Team All-News Herald. That's Billy Dennison. Please join me in congratulating these two young men on a great season. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I would like to invite Mr. Casella to rejoin me at the podium. While he's walking up here, Jeff Casella was recently recognized as the Ohio Interscholastic Athletic Administrator Association State Conference as a 2023 recipient of the Bruce Brown Award of Excellence. This is the highest award an athletic administrator can achieve in the state of Ohio. Mr. Casella has demonstrated through evidence-based documentation that Mentor High School has implemented best practices and nationally accepted standards in the administration of interscholastic athletics. Currently, there are only 27 high schools in the state that have achieved this prestigious award. We are extremely proud of Jeff for receiving this award. Congratulations, Mr. Casella. Mr. President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I would like to take a moment on behalf of the Board of Education for a special recognition this evening. We would like to honor two of our longtime board members who are serving in their final regularly scheduled meeting tonight, Mary Bryner and Tom Tuttle. It is incredible that both of you served four full terms, or 16 years each, on our Board of Education. This is such a tremendous dedication and service you have provided to our community. Though we will miss working with both of you very much, we would like to celebrate your achievements as school board members by presenting you each with our Glass Cardinal Award as a token of our appreciation and gratitude. I'll start with Mrs. Bryner. If you could please join me at the podium. While being elected four times and serving four terms is an impressive feat in itself, Mary's dedication to Mentor Public Schools far exceeds that. To fully understand how impactful Mrs. Bryner has been as a board member, you'd have to know a little bit about the experiences she's had in the district since childhood. Mrs. Bryner is a Mentor High School graduate herself. Going back to her days as a student, she was highly involved in the school community, and she's been inducted into the Mentor High School Distinguished Alumni Hall of Fame. Both of her children are Mentor High School graduates, and now her family tradition of "once a card, always a card" continues into a third generation, with her grandchildren currently in our schools. Prior to running for the Board of Education, Mary was an avid volunteer for our schools, even serving as a PTA president, which we all know is a huge job. And really, her selfless service goes beyond our schools. Mary has been a Mentor resident for more than 45 years and is always giving back to our community in various ways as well. Mary, the countless hours you've spent in meetings advocating for resources, making tough decisions, and championing the needs for our students have not gone unnoticed. Your unwavering support has been the backbone of our district's achievements. Mrs. Bryner is caring, compassionate, and giving, and as a board member, you have been so dependable. We could always count on Mary to bring thoughtful perspective to the table and to be there when needed. You have dedicated so much of your time to upholding the values of Mentor Schools and providing a high-quality education and a safe learning environment for our community's children. We will certainly miss working with you on the school board, but hope you enjoy having extra time to spend with your family and loved ones. Your work in Mentor Schools runs deep and will never be forgotten. Thank you for all you have done in service to our community.
Thank you. According to Ohio School Board Association, a good school board member is: Is legally a board member only when the Board of Education is in session; therefore, no one person, unless authorized, should speak on behalf of the board; avoids administrative decisions or attempts to second-guess the administration; the superintendent is the chief administrator, and the board has no administrative function; is well acquainted with school policies; should vote at all times in the best interest of the children of the district; is flexible and realizes there are times when changes must be made, when tradition cannot be honored, and when pressure must be ignored; remembers that board business often requires confidentiality, especially in processes involving students, personnel, land acquisition, negotiations, and the need for security; is interested in obtaining facts, but remembers also that the administration has the responsibility of operating the schools rather than spending time full-time making reports to the board or an individual board member; is a good listener at board meetings, on the street corner, and in church, but never commits himself or herself, the board or administration; knows that the reputation of the entire school district is reflected in his or her behavior and attitude; has a sense of humor and the ability to laugh at himself or herself when things look bleak; is able to sift fact from fiction, to sort out rumors from realism, and to know the difference; a gullible board member is ineffective; is able to support a decision when it's made. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve the Mentor School District for the past 16 years, and I have strived to be a good school board member in these and many other ways. It was my goal to serve the schools that educated me and three generations of my family, and hopefully will continue to do so long into the future. To our administrators, teachers, and staff, you are the best of the best, and it has been an honor working with each and every one of you. I know you want only the best for our students, and it shows in your words and actions every day. Keep up the great work that makes this a great school district for kids to learn and grow. To our parents and community members, Mentor Schools is an excellent school district. I know many of you know this already. All you have to do is look around and compare what we have and what we're doing to others in the area, and you will see this. But there are times when we need your support to continue that excellence, so please remember that our schools are the cornerstone of the community. Strong schools equal a strong community. Please continue to support our schools and our children's future. To our students, you are lucky to be here. You might not realize it now, or maybe you do, but you are. School is what you make it. There are many people here to help you, your parents, your teachers, counselors, and administrators. Don't be afraid to reach out for help if you need it. At Mentor, there are so many opportunities available that are not available in other places, and the great thing is, if you have an interest in something that's not here, talk to someone to see if it can become a reality. So find something that excites you, something you're passionate about. These years are setting the stage for your future. I can't think of a better place to do that than right here. And finally, to my family. Thank you for your unrelenting love and patience. It means the world to me. Thank you.
Now, I'd like to take a moment to talk about Mr. Tuttle. If you could please join me at the podium, Tom. Mr. Tuttle's commitment to Mentor Schools is deeply rooted as well. He and his late wife of 48 years married chose Mentor to raise their family. They proudly sent their children to Mentor Schools, and both their son and daughter graduated from Mentor High School. Now Tom has one grandchild at Hopkins, and another is a recent graduate of Mentor High. 16 years ago, when Tom ran for school board, I'm sure he was hopeful to make a great impact on our school district. But I wonder if you could have known just how impactful your contributions would be, and that your service would extend for four full terms. Tom, you're such a positive person. You listen to our community members and work to make connections with everyone. Your enthusiastic leadership and guidance have left an indelible mark on our schools, shaping policies, initiatives, and programs that have positively impacted countless lives within our community. Your dedication has been instrumental in fostering an environment of growth, learning, and excellence here in Mentor. A lot has happened over the course of your time on the board, from the district overcoming financial challenges, to redistricting, to navigating a pandemic, and more. Your approach has been so helpful to getting through it all. As this chapter comes to a close, I hope you feel a sense of pride about all you've helped to accomplish. I wish you all the best in the future, and hope that includes having more time to spend with your family. Thank you, Tom.
I'd like a copy of that. Use that for my resume. Well, thank you. I was not prepared to really speak, so I just jotted down a couple notes. But one of the things, from the very beginning, and Mary has been fantastic. I've learned a great deal from her. But from the beginning, when we joined the board 16 years ago, and we fought and lost four years prior, no, two years prior to that. But one of the things, when people ask me, "Well, Tom, why do you want to be on this school board?" My thoughts range, you know, wide open, but one thing I've always believed why I wanted to do this, and I'd be an ambassador for the school system and our community. I have been a promoter from the time when my daughter, my son, were in the schools. I believe in Mentor, Mentor Public Schools, the teachers, the administration that we've had over the years. Well, at one point, we got a little shaky, and that's why Mary and I both got on the school board, because of financial issues. But moving forward, many of you have seen me before, out in the public, said hello to me. New people are here, but I see people that have been here for several meetings in the last year or two, and even beyond that. But I've always been an ambassador, positive, uplifting, because I believe in the school system. I believe in our administration, our principals, our teachers. We have some fantastic staff members, athletic coaches, trainers, the whole gambit. And I'm so proud to have been a part of this for 16-plus years as an employee, as a board member. And even prior to that, when I went to football games and basketball games, and every now and then a wrestling match. But one thing about being a school board member, our primary function is hiring, and I'm not going to say firing, because I've never fired a superintendent or treasurer, but each and every one along that ladder of 16 years, if you've ever climbed the ladder, you start at the bottom, and when you get to the top, you want the best at the top every time, a step up over the preceding. And that's what I've witnessed so well from these two young men. I'm not going to say I did it all, but but I've been one-fifth of that decision for 16 years, and I couldn't be more proud of our school system, our superintendent, our CFO, our community, God bless you all, and our safety forces. I just got my buddies. So, thank you so much. I could go on and name individuals, but I'm not going to, because you can't imagine how many names I do remember and how many members' names I can't remember, because I've met thousands over my life of 16-plus years being involved. But thank you very much. I'm so proud of these schools. Thank you.
Congratulations again, Mrs. Bryner and Mr. Tuttle. Your tireless efforts and invaluable contributions have been the cornerstone of our district's progress and success. Throughout your tenure, you've displayed an unyielding passion for ensuring the best possible education for our students. For that, we are so grateful. I hope you think of your time in Mentor finally, when you reflect back on it. Thank you so much.
Next on the agenda, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Motion's carried 5-0.
Next on the agenda, hearing of the public on agenda items only.
Our first speaker is Ms. Wall. Ms. Muzika, you are on deck.
All right, good evening. I started to write a little something, and then I stopped because I had a feeling that Mr. Heath would do a phenomenal job of talking about two board members tonight that are very special. 16 years is a very long time. It's actually half of my lifetime. I graduated in 2009, and I am honored that both of you were on the stage the day that I walked and graduated and received my diploma. And you also were there for my brother as well, three years later. I actually showed Mrs. Bryner a photo earlier of her onstage with us at our graduation in 2009. And now both of my boys have been in our school district, going for a few years now, and it's wonderful how things end up being kind of like a full circle. I am a Cardinal. I'm a proud Cardinal. And when I was a student, I had no idea what a school board did and how much they meant to our district. And I will tell you both, through conversations that I have had with you both one-on-one, that you have been true examples of what dedication and commitment and just caring are. You have shown that you really do truly care about our school district, and I appreciate you both so very much. And while it is sad to see you go, I want to thank you both for everything that you have done in 16 years and for everything that you have taught me personally. So thank you very much, and I wish both of you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Tuttle, board members, Mr. Heath, Mr. Wade, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. As was mentioned earlier, this is your Mr. Tuttle and Mrs. Bryner's last official meeting after serving four terms on Mentor's School Board. Bambi Vargo, who I'm sure you all know, is unable to be here this evening, and she asked me to present this to you. As you know, Bambi is a retired teacher and a lover of children's literature. These nine books are by one of her favorite children's author illustrators, Leo Leany. He was internationally, he is an international designer, illustrator, and graphic artist. He was born in Holland, educated in Italy, and moved to the United States in 1939. He would usually draw pictures as he told stories to his grandchildren, but one time he found himself on a long train ride with no drawing materials. So instead, he tore circles of yellow and blue from a magazine to help him tell a story. This experience led him to create his first book for children, Little Blue and Little Yellow. His picture books are distinguished by their enduring themes, graphic simplicity, and brilliant use of collage, and include four calico brilliant use of collage, and include four Calacot Honor Books. His work was created, he created his work with a deep message, to empower children to lead important social change. She would like to donate them to the Mentor Schools in honor of you, Mr. Tuttle, and you, Mrs. Briner. She knows this is not the proper procedure for donating something to the schools, but she hopes that Mr. Heath can accept the books and take them through the process, I hope. Additionally, I've been asked by the Support, Public Education, and Mentor Group to present a small token of our appreciation and respect to you, Mr. Tuttle, and you, Mrs. Briner. You have represented us well in your 16 years of service, and you will be missed. I was also asked to remind you, once a Cardinal, always a Cardinal. And I also wish a happy holiday season to all of the board and administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Muzika, and then Ms. Perry.
Good evening. Thank you again, Tom and Mary, for your service. 16 years is not half my life, so thank you for that reminder. My comments tonight pertain to both the financial and legislative reports on the agenda, I suppose. There was some discussion at last month's, oh, I'm sorry, the timer's not running, I'll wait. Okay, thank you. The discussion at last month's meeting regarding the Ed Choice voucher program and its expansion this year, and I wanted to share some more information about that. It's true that the number of students within the Mentor District who are using Ed Choice vouchers this year did increase over previous years, as it did in all the districts in Lake County. But what this data doesn't show is whether those students ever attended a public school. Study that was done two years ago actually showed that two out of three students in Ohio who were using Ed Choice vouchers at that time had never been in a public school. So this is taxpayer subsidies for families who never intended to send their children to public schools. What this expanded voucher program does is continue to siphon taxpayer dollars away from public schools and directs them to private and parochial schools that are able to discriminate against students, that are not required to serve all students like public schools do, and do not have the transparency that is required of public school districts. The voucher program is a massive giveaway of taxpayer dollars without accountability. It's grown from $20 million in its first year about 20 years ago to $600 million this year, and is trending towards a billion in the next couple of years. And while Mr. Wade did a good job of explaining that the new Fair Districts formula doesn't penalize the Mentor District for students who use Ed Choice vouchers, the fact remains is that the state budget is limited, and an increase in a program like that does have a downward compression on the dollars available for our public school districts. This is an unacceptable diversion of public dollars in a time when schools are forced to return frequently to voters to pass levies due to the continued unconstitutional method of school funding in Ohio that over relies on property taxes. I wanted to make the board aware of a coalition called Vouchers Hurt Ohio that is working to determine whether the voucher program violates the state constitution or other applicable laws, and they are looking at bringing legal action accordingly. There are many public school districts who are joining this coalition, including a number in Northeast Ohio, that includes Wickliffe, Chardon, Mayfield, Geneva, Aurora, Hudson, and dozens of others. My request to the board tonight is that the Mentor School District consider joining this coalition as well, to stand up for fairly funded public schools with public dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tuttle, Mr. Heath, Mr. Wade, members of the board. I believe that a good education is enhanced with a diversity of thought. Difference of opinion is, of course, healthy for a democracy. But participation in a democracy can only work if the governing bodies have officials that can competently fulfill their constitutional duties. Luckily, the role of a board member is quite clear. The board sets policies with the entirety of the district's students in mind. So you can imagine my confusion, maybe a little bit of surprise, when policies and protocols are broken by the individuals sitting on that very board. My first question for the board is if every board member, if they do, submit their personal remarks and agenda-related reports in writing prior to each board meeting, as is protocol. I believe the majority of the board does, but not all of them do. Please feel free to correct me if I am wrong. My second question is if a board member repeatedly breaks the board's own protocol regarding policy enforcement, is there a way to gently correct that erroneous behavior? Breaking protocol during board meetings and via official board email correspondence is happening in this district. That chaotic behavior has been a harmful distraction for the past two years. There are hurtful things said at these board meetings about children. I'm going to repeat that. There are hurtful things said at these board meetings about children. People make mistakes all the time. The real question is if they can learn for them, apologize for them, and better themselves because of them. At the very least, I implore my district's board to take this role seriously and work solely to better our district, not further their personal agendas. The agenda of the board and its members should be a student-centered, full stop. Let's get back to business, and remember that the board's focus should be the achievement and safety of all students. Thank you.
That concludes this session of the board. Next on the agenda, Mr. Heath, superintendent's report and recommendations.
Pardon my voice, I'm fighting a little cold, so may have to drink a couple of times as I go through this. Couple of things, I wanted to share a couple of quick updates on our strategic planning process with everyone, so we know what is happening next. I actually have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday with Triad Research Group to finalize the logistics with the community survey that we will send out immediately following winter break. We will be having meetings with a couple of organizations that will serve as our facilitator for the stakeholder group discussions, that will be an integral part of our planning process. Once we finalize the facilitator, we will begin to form the groups that we will bring together to provide feedback on our previous strategic plan goals and to give input regarding the action steps that we will use with our new strategic plan. Over the last year and a half, I've had countless individual meetings with staff members, parents, students, and community members that have touched on various aspects of our current strategic plan. I have asked if they would be willing to sit on some of these stakeholder groups once we started the process around our new strategic plan, and I have a running list of their names. We'll be working with our district and building-level administrators to identify additional staff members, students, and parents that might be good candidates for this process as well. We'll also work with our Board of Education members to identify individuals that would be willing to sit on some of these stakeholder teams. Once we have this comprehensive list in place, we will work with whatever facilitator we finalize to finalize the size of the groups and the scope of that work. As I mentioned last month, I'm really looking forward to this work as we set the vision for the district for the next five years. And I'm going to steal a little bit of Maggie's thunder here, because I do have a student achievement update that came in late last week. Last week, we received our fall third-grade reading scores from the state test our students took in early November. I'm happy to report that we increased our proficiency scores by 12 percentage points over last fall. Our proficiency rate is now at 58% for our third-grade students across the district. The key thing to remember is that this is a test that is measuring reading levels for the students at the end of the third-grade year. So 58% of our students are already deemed proficient in reading at the third-grade level, and they have demonstrated this in November. I want to thank our staff members working in grades K through 3 for their hard work on early literacy to prepare our students to read at grade level. This skill is the foundation for nearly every other subject area, and we are extremely proud of our students for their continued success. As we continue to dig into these scores, we will identify the areas needed to support all of our learners in reading in third grade in the coming months, so that everyone meets the third-grade reading guarantee requirements by the end of the year. Excuse me. I've received a few emails recently around transportation, so I thought I'd give everyone a quick update. We have identified a new transportation routing software provider that is currently working on mapping our district in preparation for rerouting our buses for the 24-25 school year. This is the first and most important step in moving, in improving our transportation services in our district. Our new communication system loop that we implemented at the beginning of the school year continues to serve us well, and we're continuing to fine-tune our communications coming out of our transportation department. At this point, we have not found a cost-effective GPS mapping program just yet, so that is on the back burner now, as we are still looking at cutting our budgets across the district to meet the goals of our five-year forecast. All of our bus operator positions have been filled for the last couple of months now, so we are very happy about that. We are still looking for additional substitute drivers and bus aides to make sure we stay fully staffed on a daily basis. So if anyone out there is interested, please contact the transportation office. One additional item that I want to mention is that with all of the transportation issues that we have been working through this year, we have identified some practices around the district around the timing of dismissals that we are going to have to adjust. We'll be having some conversations with our principal team on Friday to start looking at these practices, but wanted to share that tonight, as these shifts may impact our dismissal procedures and times, particularly at the elementary level. And then one final update to share with everyone tonight is that Mr. Wade and I had a great conversation with Mayor Eva and Chief Forsyth in Mentor on the Lake last week. As we continue to push for the full implementation of our School Resource Officer Expansion Plan that was shared with the board this summer, we are attempting to find additional officers to fill some of our four-hour shifts we have scheduled for our elementary schools. I want to thank Chief Forsyth and Mayor Eva for their willingness to work with us to fill the time slots at Lake Elementary, so we have coverage in that building, since it's located in Mentor on the Lake. If we see an increased interest from our Mentor on the Lake officers, we may then start looking at the possibility of using them to cover some of the unfilled slots at our other buildings throughout the district. I remain committed to getting our expansion plan fully implemented to ensure our buildings are as safe as possible for our students and staff. Mr. President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda, and recommend approval of items 6A1 and 6A2.
So moved.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Motion's carry five zero.
Mr. President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the Lake Tech 360 agreement for managed internal broadband services.
So moved.
Questions? Please call the roll, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Mr. President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to certified personnel, and C2 through C5, all related to human resource matters.
So moved. Second.
Comments? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
This concludes my portion of tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Board of Education report and recommendations, new business. Do we have a motion for the approval of the January 9th Board of Education meetings?
So moved.
You all saw it?
Ms. Briner, sorry. Thank you, Ms. Briner.
Please call the roll.
Just as a reminder, those will be three meetings that will go sequentially, 6:30, 6:45, and 7:00.
Very good, yes. And they go fast.
Yes.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Jess, Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next, the appointment of President Pro Tem for the January 9th organizational meeting. Do we have a nomination?
I would like to nominate Mrs. Cook as our sitting vice president. She, I think, is prepared to do a fine job. Second.
Thank you.
Any others? Please call the roll, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. I would like to add the addendum. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Mentor Public Library trustee appointment, Jennifer McGee, effective January 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2031.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next on the agenda, legislative report?
No report.
It comes too late for our meeting.
It does.
It seems to have moved like one week later, it's like.
It has.
It was consistent so long, for at least 14, 15 years that we've been on the board.
And it was late sometimes then, but this has gotten really late.
Yes. Okay. Next on the agenda, student achievement report. Mrs. Cook?
Yes, thank you. 30 Mentor High School seniors learned on Monday that they will be receiving the Governor's Merit Scholarship. This new scholarship was created by Governor DeWine for Ohio's highest-achieving students and is awarded to the top 5% from high schools graduating class, starting with the class of 2024. Students can receive up to $5,000 for up to four years to attend a public or private college or university within the state of Ohio. So each year, 35% to 40% of Ohio's highest-achieving high school graduates attend college or university in another state. So our governor has created the Governor's Merit Scholarship to aim to keep our state's top-performing high school graduates within the state. On December 3rd, the Mentor High School music students, directed by Mr. Adam Landry, delighted guests during their primary fundraiser, Cabaret. The Cabaret was dedicated to their friend Jack Sawyer and showcased the talent and passion that each student has cultivated for music. I enjoyed the personalized selections that each student chose and the support that the students displayed for each other. Thank you to our lighthearted MCs who kept the show moving, and to each of the brave performers who shared themselves. Shore and Memorial have both entertained audiences with their holiday band performances. A tremendous amount of dedication from students and their families goes into learning an instrument, and we and we are fortunate at Menor Schools to have excellent educators that share their love of music to teach our students and showcase such quality presentations. And speaking of winter music, our Winter Music Festival, the Menor High School Music Program will be hosting an all-day winter music festival on Saturday, December 16th, where band, choir, and orchestra programs will perform. This is the inaugural Winter Music Festival for students, families, and the community to enjoy listening to our talented high school musicians all on the same day. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, chief financial officers' report and recommendations.
Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Heath. Our financials, going back to looking at comparing our current trends versus our five-year forecast, which we just approved a couple of weeks ago. We're trending obviously pretty close, no material differences. We're about $267,000 below what we expected at this point in revenue, mostly a timing issue, and we're spending about $751,000 less than we expected, so a net increase in our cash balance of about $484,000 is where we're trending. Nothing of material substance to report on revenues at this point. We are trending down in tax, property tax, again, but we knew that that was going to happen because we had higher collections than we expected last year at the end of the year, so we expected the first half collections to kind of make up for that difference, and that's where we're at. So when we... You can't save me, can you? Other way. So when we look at everything, $267,000 lower, and mainly the major reason for that versus projections is we did not receive as large of a rebate as we have from SERS in, not rebate, return as we had because we projected our salaries to be closer than we have in the past, which is a good thing and a bad thing at the same time because we made the assumption based on what we typically get, but then we were more accurate than we have been historically as we continue to refine that with our new analytics system. So again, $267,000 is a big amount to everybody in the room. However, when you're looking at $110 million in revenue, it's not very significant at all, so I think we're trending pretty close. When we look at our expenses, again, trending about where we would think we would be for the month. We're up a little bit this month comparison to last year at the same time, down drastically because we didn't make the big transfer, as I've said a number of times, so going to the next slide. We're about $751,000 better than we were projecting. Most of that could be resulting in timing. Again, we're only five months through our 12 for the fiscal year, so we would expect that trend to kind of continue through the rest of the year and be within our normal range as we would expect. Last thing I have to report is part of our new board policies, Niola, is where we update the board on our annual credit card reporting. We received this year, calendar year, $29,975.82 in rebates from our credit card. So part of our credit card program that we're in is we get a rebate back for the amount spent, so PNC sent us a check this year totaling that amount, so we put that money back into the general fund to offset expenses. So just wanted to report that out, so we had it noted and we were meeting our policies. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions. Merry Christmas. You're all welcome. Mr. President, members of the board, I ask for the approval of items B through E and any addendums that may be acted upon in one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Breiner.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Makes my Discover card rebate look awfully small.
Well, if you got that kind of rebate, we might be worried about your spending habits.
That's true. Excellent point.
New business, do we have any?
Oh, I did want to ask one thing that maybe you can answer for me, Mr. Wade. That change in the law about the minutes and the 48 hours and all of that, how will that impact our new meetings in January since they happen in sequence?
I don't know if I know which law you're referring to. The three.
Is, as I'm understanding it, that the minutes, if you haven't published them, have to be read in their entirety at the next official meeting? So the organizational meeting minutes would have to be read at the...
I guess I'll have to find that out. I don't know.
I mean, it seemed absurd. Couldn't we just re-roll the tape? If you're interested, you can watch what we just did. I mean, I don't know.
And I forgot to bring that up with legal counsel when we had our meeting today. It's my bad.
I mean, it just seemed, this is a problem that every district's gonna have all over the state.
Outside of Sodret Walker, I don't think anybody would want to hear me read those minutes out in their entirety, but he may.
It'll be a test of endurance. I just thought it was ill-advised or they didn't think it through. So just...
I will get with legal and make sure we're compliant. That's interesting.
Thanks, that was the only thing I had.
Mr. Tuttle, and to add on to that, I think that there was a way that we could waive reading of the board. We could pass a resolution to waive reading of the board minutes as long as, as long as there were two days notice. Otherwise, we would always have to read the minutes in their entirety. But if we have the minutes posted two days in advance and we pass a resolution, then we wouldn't have to read them.
Because the issue really comes down to the amount of time that we have between we put them on board docs and Sunday and then when the meeting is, correct?
Yeah, so we have the two days normally. And we only run into it when we have the meetings, like this upcoming January meeting with the organizational.
And we do that a few times a year where we have like the special education, like where there's meetings back to back. So I just thought it was...
Typically, as long as we pass that resolution to waive reading of minutes, we wouldn't have to read the minutes at each meeting.
But the 48 hours is the tricky part, which seemed crazy, unless you could do some time travel, not sure.
So I would be interested in, in, once we have clarity on that issue, maybe suggesting a resolution so that every meeting we don't have to read the minutes of, of all of them.
I think that sounds like a wise suggestion.
Put it in my calendar right now so I don't forget.
Thank you.
Ten times. Next on the agenda, hearing of the public.
Our first speaker is Ms. Perry.
I wanted to use this time to thank you, Mary, and you, Tom, for your years of service. I was trying to figure out a way to kind of properly offer my thanks and tell you how much it means to me to hear your dedication to the district I love so much. I truly believe that educators, administrators, and staff in public schools save children's lives. I have often time met with children that were broken, came from violent homes, and had, almost like they didn't have a chance at life. This was in a destitute population in rural Ohio where I worked with these children. And I think what helped those families save those kids' lives was public school enrollment. I saw many children, sometimes, and the stereotypes are true, sometimes families must flee their own homes with the clothes on their back in the middle of the night. But when I helped those parents enroll those kids in the public school, which we strategically placed near a close elementary school that was in walking distance, the organization did. I didn't have any same planning of it because this organization was founded before I was born. But that is what I mean when I say that all your years of service as educators, I want you to know that I know for a fact that you have saved children's lives. So that is why I wanted to share that story, so you know that I truly mean it from the bottom of my heart. Thank you, Tom and Mary. I'm very blessed to know you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Ms. Wall.
And then Mr. Ritchie, you're in the hole.
This time of year, there's so much to celebrate, and there's so much going on, not just in the community but within our school district. That's why I'm dressed up as how I am today. We actually, right before this meeting, we were at Menor High School in the cafeteria. NHS put on their elementary school Christmas party, so I wanted to just give a huge thanks to Mrs. Carroll and the NHS students because they do a phenomenal job. I know she kind of lets all the students just do their own work and put everything together, and they do a phenomenal job. Sienna was there, and it was, it was a lot of fun. I know my boys always enjoy it. I also just wanted to just wish everyone a happy holiday, remind everyone how important holidays are to everyone and the emotions and the feelings that come with all of that. And it's such a reminder of how important it is to put yourself in someone else's shoes, to be kind. How important it is to be kind and empathetic and understanding, and it's very clear at the holidays, I believe, to remember that we're all going through our own thing. Everyone is, you know, going through their own walk of life and has their own personal story and their own, you know, personal situations happening, and it's so important for us all to just, like I just said, put ourselves in other people's shoes and remember that we're all going through something, not so much together but on our own, and keep that in mind. And I want to wish all of the teachers, administration, the school board, President, Mr. Wade, a happy holiday season and enjoy your break.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Mazika, you are after Mr. Ritchie. Pass you. Ms. McCormick, you'll be our last speaker.
Hi, everyone. Good afternoon. My name's Robert Ritchie. I'm joined here with my foreign exchange students. My wife and I are hosts to her. She's from Germany. She came here and just hit the ground running, joined the Menor soccer team, who did pretty well. I mean, you guys won regionals, but did well. Currently, a straight A student and is classified as a senior and taking senior-level classes. We have been told that she is not able to participate in graduation. Little backstory, her father did the same program here at Menor High School back in 1992 and was able to walk graduation. Was not awarded a diploma, and that's not what we're looking for either. More just an acknowledgement that, you know, she did these senior-level classes. She is a senior in every sense of the word. And we're asking the board to consider the request to have her name call the graduation, allow her to walk the stage, and present her with even just some kind of recognition, even if it's not a diploma. That's all we have.
Thank you.
Yes? That concludes our public participation. It's a Christmas miracle.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Who was first?
I said second.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Breiner.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:02.
Wow.